Good morning, everyone. I called to run our meeting for July seventeenth.
Sotomayor?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Wimmer?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
And now the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Pastor John Morton from Ottawa Community Church. Let's pray. Father, I want to thank you for the laughter in the room this morning. Thank you for your spirit that is always with us when we turn our heads to you and listen to you. I ask, Lord, that you would remind us throughout this day that your ways are higher than our ways and your thoughts are higher than our thoughts. I ask your blessing upon these commissioners. Lord, that you would give them wisdom and understanding in every decision that they make. And that your presence would be with them and your peace would be upon them. And I ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I bless you guys.
Our consent agenda today includes claim vouchers in the amount of seven hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars, eighty-nine cents, and meeting minutes from July tenth.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Wimmer?
Yes. First item, business is rezoning application twenty-four oh five dash zero 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 four. Good morning, Pat.
Okay, today we're talking about a property commonly known as thirty-eight thirty-six Delaware Road. It's roughly three miles north of Pomona. The applicant has originally requested that three acres be made into a separate parcel into the R three A district. This will come out of our original parcel of sixty-three acres, which will stay in the A one district. In order to fulfill that request, Water Systems Engineering was hired for both the soil analysis and a water well recommendation. The soil analysis came out fine. They'll be able to utilize an in-ground system. And there are multiple wells in the area with depths ranging from ninety-five feet to two hundred and twenty-five feet, which are producing about fifteen to twenty-five gallons per minute. Based on the procedure of previous applications, staff recommended approval at the time of the original rezoning application. However, when we brought it in front of the planning commission, some discussion and deliberation was commenced and was decided to utilize the table of lesser change. They then decided to modify the rezoning application to the RE district, which has a minimum of five acres. This will require a new parcel, or excuse me, per Article twenty-three, Section five point oh five, the Franklin County zoning regulations. The planning commission may modify at its discretion an application for rezoning to a particular district by recommending a rezoning to a district of lesser intensity as determined by the table of lesser change. This has been done in more recent past on a commercial property just east of I thirty-five and Nebraska. The applicant at the time asked for I two, but ultimately was given approval for C two district. So it's not an unheard of situation. We have done this within the last year or so. The planning commission reasoning for the modification is the regional area does not actually have any similar sized tracts to the three A district, but there are actually four RE district parcels in that specific section. What they're utilizing is the comprehensive plan on this, trying to keep us from spot zoning. So bringing it to a three A district, which is usually saved for a subdivision of multiple similar lots. They don't want to set a precedence for this area because everything is relatively large tract for future parcels being cut up. In the staff report, you will find two versions of the survey, one being three acres if you choose to go with the original applicant's request, and one being five acres showing the parcel as recommended by planning commission. After hearing the planning commission's reasoning and speaking with the landowners on if they're okay with the modifications, which they did agree to the five acre parcel, staff recommends approval of the application as original or as modified. Our original recommendation was set on previous zoning resolutions that have been adopted in the past. However, depending on this vote, we will make adjustments if necessary for future recommendations by staff. Planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning for RE district of the five acres.
So when they did it originally, when we approved it originally, it was three, and then they did all?
Nobody ever approved it in the first place. This is coming to?
But their original application was three?
Right. So we got the application for three, brought it in front of planning commission. They discussed it, and then they decided to recommend approval of five to the RE district because?
Has there already been a survey done at three?
There's been a survey for both three and five.
Oh, so they actually have both surveys already?
And it is in your packet, I believe. And I worked with Brian Kates on that so that it didn't hurt the applicant financially, I suppose.
Well, like the planning commission's doing, I mean, what the, what a community board should, they're looking at the nature of that area and trying to keep it cohesive and?
Yeah, and I believe they did utilize the comprehensive plan as it's designed for their decision-making.
All good things. There's a lot of logic there, and if the applicant's fine with it, I'd look down the avenue of the five acre option with the residential estate zoning. Any other thoughts? Just throwing it out there to get conversation started, don't?
It's for their kids, you know, it's for a loan, so they can get their loan done so they can build on the property. And I don't really see a problem with the three if they wanted to do it that way, but either way.
Well, to be clear, they're open to either, right?
Either, yeah, yes.
And we have a recommendation from the zoning board for the five acre RE. Are you motioning one way or another?
I'll make a motion to approve with the five.
All right.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
That's fine, yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Chair Wimmer?
Yes.
All right. Second item of business, also as a rezoning application, that number is twenty-four oh four triple zero oh two.
Okay, yes, this would be commonly known as four twenty, forty-two twenty-five Indiana Terrace, located roughly one and a half miles due south of Centropolis. The applicant has requested to rezone approximately ten acres from the A two district to the RE district out of thirty-six acres. The remaining twenty-six will remain in the A two district. This location has no rule water available. There's a letter from Water Systems Engineering that states there are multiple wells within a one-mile radius, two wells within an eighth mile radius. These wells are providing up to fifteen gallons per minute. The new parcel is large enough for septic that would be required. The applicant bought this property together with another family member, and the purpose of this is to separate the land into parts of ownership per individual that purchased. The ten-acre parcel is to be built upon while the twenty-six will stay as is without any foreseeable development other than a potential pond. There is significant floodplain on this parcel. However, the property line configuration was designed to allow for maximum potential use of the property for the applicant. It does not appear that this would cause any significant issues for the roads and infrastructure to the county as it's just one more parcel in a already pretty dense area. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, as does planning commission, with a unanimous decision for recommendation of approval.
Questions for Pat? Is there a motion to approve the rezoning application twenty-four oh four triple zero two?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Wimmer?
Yes. All right. Third item of business, we're discussing publishing the twenty twenty-five budget.
Thank you, Janet.
So you guys have in front of you the budget summary sheet, which is what we normally publish in the newspaper. And you can see there that we've got everything in there. As you guys discuss, the only numerical number changes we've made since your budget meetings was based upon your discussion of the Public Works Department and everything else that's in this budget before you is as you discussed, but the only change is the Public Works Department would receive two dollars an hour increase up to a competitive wage. Our written history on the right-hand side, on the last number on the right-hand side is forty-six. Our code bridge is forty-eight point six six four, right above that. And our community last year was forty-nine. So this does, for example, just a little decrease.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know my mic wasn't on. So, any questions from you guys?
I would add, my hope is that this number is higher than it is ultimately going to end up. We know that once we publish a number, we can't go above that, but we know we can bring it down. Hope it's not going to be much, but the hope is that we can come off of this a little bit. You know, we, budgets in some ways are getting harder to do. It's insane right now. I mean, certainly, I could argue that all of our employees are once again behind our competitors. So what we were tasked with was trying to figure out which departments bear the worst. And we're going to try to knock those out this year and try to knock the others out hopefully next year so that we don't just wait and have a massive increase all at once. Clear in doing our analysis, and we've discussed this for a long time, our sheriff's office, corrections officers, I think we're far and away the most behind, and then it was our public works. Departments made the decision to try to do them this year. I will tell you, even with these increases, especially for Public Works, that we're not, we're not ahead of the curve. We're just closer to the people that we should be competing with. Not overdoing it. We're trying to balance, we're trying to be fiscally responsible and trying to continue providing some. Kind of one-mill decrease. Add into consideration with what we've done over the last several years, we're still on a great trajectory. Obviously, we talked to a couple of you about this. We worry that at some point here, property values will taper off, and we just, we have to keep that in mind, too. I would stand for any question.
One other addition that I didn't mention is in Public Works also. When we discuss their transfer over to their reserve account so we can start trying to transition away from financing their motor graders and other equipment, we talked about trying to increase that reserve transfer. So this does provide an additional five hundred thousand dollar reserve transfer over what you guys discussed in your budget meetings. And again, we think that that still fits in here and is reasonable. So, and that's what you guys have been discussing for the last couple of years trying to do, so.
Just to reiterate, what we're doing today is really defining an area that we're going to build a budget within. And then at our budget hearing in August, September is usually what those are, we'll have a working budget put together. But it needs to stay within these parameters that we're considering publishing, so.
Yes, this will be, this will be the high, the high number, like Derek said. So as far as a budget hearing date, we have to set a budget hearing in September because we are exceeding the, we're planning to exceed the revenue neutral rate. We normally do that on Wednesday night, and so I would propose to you all that we do that on September eleventh at six P M.
All righty. Does that work for everybody? Speak now or forever hold your peace? I'm looking at her calendar.
No, it's fine. I'm just adding it.
Okay. Does that work? All right. Is there a motion to set a public hearing for the twenty twenty-five budget on September eleventh at six P M? And authorize the county clerk to publish the budget in the Ottawa Herald not to exceed an estimated mill rate of forty-six?
Forty-eight point six six four.
Yep, there it is. Wrong line. Forty-eight point six six four. Thanks for keeping an eye on me. Is there a motion to that effect?
Go move.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Wimmer?
Yes. All right. Staff reports, Derek.
Janet, out of an abundance of caution, and I'll defer to you on this, but obviously, that does exceed revenue neutral. Statement to that effect, or are we just acknowledging that by approving a maximum budget?
Yeah, I am understanding from you guys, since you have just chosen to publish a budget that's exceeding revenue neutral, that you are notifying me that you plan to exceed the revenue neutral.
You want another motion that just says that we plan to exceed the revenue neutral?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, you've just authorized me to publish this budget, and therefore you have notified me that you plan to exceed revenue neutral. So, yes, yeah, I'm with Derek, and it's an abundance of caution just to say it publicly that you plan to exceed the revenue neutral rate and are notifying me, so.
I would remind all of you that state revenue neutral last year, and it is exceptionally hard to do that two years in a row. And we were one of a handful of governments that were able to do it, so we'd obviously love to be able to. Up there thinking, you know, Jeff Welton takes over Public Works and the Public Works budget explodes, I just? Should be, oh, oh. Don't hear that, Bill. Couple of things. We received an email from the Wellsville Chamber of Commerce. We have been a silver member. Have asked if we would like to upgrade to a platinum membership. Silver is a hundred and fifty dollars. Platinum is four hundred and fifty dollars. Just things that I feel like you guys like to have discussions about on, if you would like to provide some perspective.
Yeah, somehow, we, in fact, we were even listed as a nonprofit on the level. And I'd asked several times up there over the last two, three years, and I never could get an answer. Well, I finally got one, and it showed that they did away with a gold level, which that's what we would, would have went to, but, and went strictly to a platinum level, as a top level. So we'd only been rated as a nonprofit somehow. Three, four, five, six years ago, it got changed through every year. You get different treasures, you get different heads, and they go away. And somehow, we got dropped way back, so. And they just had to ask them possibly if they want to go back. Platinum is just something they just started, and I don't have it in front of me, but there's a whole list of things you get, you know, with platinum. I don't have that much to bring you now, but. But there's a lot of them, you know, with the?
Well, and certainly, this is the quintessential board decision. I would tell you that we have a good partnership going with the city. This is not a big spend. And relative to what we pay the Ottawa Chamber, it's, I believe, a fraction of that, so I have no heartburn about this at all, but would take any guidance that you have.
I say, yeah, let's do.
My only?
I'll follow you, yeah.
My only thought is we just published the budget, talk about how hard it is to come close to staying revenue neutral in spite of rising costs and all that. And I think when we look at budgeting, you know, you look at, I mean, even our discussions to a point, but any governmental conversations, usually what more can we do? And set priorities, but I think it's just as important to look at what we can possibly do without. And we can continue to be a county government if we don't spend this additional amount. So, not at all indictment on them. I think we need to look critically at everything at that point, but, I don't know. It's kind of hard on the heels of the proven potential of a little bit of a spending increase, a tax rate decrease, to not at least be cognizant of that.
And I would tell you that certainly I am cognizant of that. I view these partnerships with chambers as pertaining to tourism, which of course would open up the transient guest tax avenue and thus wouldn't affect our operating budget. But yes, Cole, I wholeheartedly agree with everything you just said.
I just think we kind of slid back on the deal. It happened. No, but ain't our fault. It ain't the people's fault now. Just finally realized, somebody had moved us way back down the ladder a few years ago. We just didn't realize it. But I know the people they have in there now are doing a very good job of promoting businesses and working with, real close tie with the city. They didn't maybe all together have that before, but they do. They're doing a lot better jobs.
I've got a couple of you that are okay with it. Is there a third one that's fine with?
Emma?
Well, I know, I've got you and Roy. You're both nodding your head.
I'm okay with it. I just don't want to be, you know, the one that?
Okay, fair enough. Well, I can take care of that, and that is all I have this morning, I believe, so. All right. Nothing? Nope? Ambulance? You're okay? Sorry.
Yeah.
I was looking at. Morning, Kristy.
Good morning. So just, it seems like my life, everything happens at once. It always happens that way at work, too. Everything just kind of culminates together. But I did want to let you know that every year we, with American Heart Association, we apply for what's called a Mission Lifeline Award. And this year, we got the bronze level. So it just measures metrics that we meet for stroke care and heart attack care. And would have been a little higher, except we were off on how fast we transmit our EKGs to the hospital. And when you're only looking at, you know, maybe four patients every quarter, and you're off on one, and maybe it's twelve minutes instead of ten, it throws those numbers where you just aren't, they're no longer obtainable. But, and that was the case with this, but we did get bronze, so in every other way, we met, we met all the metrics. And really, the size of our county, unless we are perfect, we're not going to get anything higher than bronze. So it's just a testament to how hard our employees work and how well they know how to do their job and how well they take care of patients, and that it is a priority for them.
Glad we're seeing ourselves against such a high standard, like you say, such a small data set that we don't get too hung up on the?
Right. We had also, I know we've been talking about having a class for fall prevention. Happy to let you know that that has started. We are hosting our first Matter of Balance class. O R C is allowing us to use their property, and the class is full.
Oh, wow, yeah.
We'll be at the fair this week, so you can stop by and see us at the first aid tent. Wanted to give you a quick update about Wellsville. Dustin has plans for getting all the I T in now. Joanna and I have been working to get plans for an open house so that we can get that whenever we move in. Pat's been up there and assisted us. Appliances are set to be delivered next week. And right now, we're just kind of waiting on some, some paint to get corrected, and I hope that that's the last thing.
Yeah.
So moving along there nicely. And then the last thing I have is Medic Four is registered with the state and licensed, so it's legal to drive on the road now. And it is sitting in the parking lot, so after a meeting, we can all go, we can all go see it. It's a beautiful ambulance.
And whoever ordered the weather for the fair this week?
Absolutely.
Oh, my gosh, we'll take it, so.
Not going to cook like normal, huh?
But I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Done any outreach to your frequent flyers with the Matter of Balance education? I mean, this one's full, so maybe for the next one, but?
I don't believe that we have, but I cannot speak to that.
Thank you, Kristy.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
Okay, just briefly, Old Fifty project has started basically on both ends. Last week, Kilo started their work. Most of the, most of the work that they're doing right now is dirt work within that first four miles. I've been meeting, they have Bartlett and West onsite supervisor, and I've been meeting with them and Kilo daily in keeping up and working together with those little things that we can do together, and I think that's going extremely well. We have also started our work, the internal work we're doing for the county, just west of Williamsburg. Yesterday was the first day that we had begun. We fabricated some things to make it work. Justin is, again, he was in here a few weeks ago, but this is really his opportunity to cut his teeth with the county. And I want to, I want to, I think they made it two hundred and eighty feet yesterday prepped, is what he said this morning. To, and we've got at least, I mean, probably another half mile on both sides before we'll be ready. But if, if we can continue that pace, we'll have it done probably within a week or so. But I really want to thank the employees that we have out there working. We've got some folks that are really thinking outside the box on what they're doing out there and trying to make something out of it when it comes to road width. That road's a hundred years old, and we are, we've done a lot of things that we haven't done in the past. So I want to thank those guys for their skills and their abilities to try to, try to make this as effective as possible. Next week, I believe Monday, they will start the milling process on the first four miles outside of town. So it's going to be a mess out there for a little bit, but it shouldn't take more than three or four days.
Are they doing traffic control flagging?
They are. They're just going to run one lane, is what Brian told me. So you'll be able to get through, but you'll have to wait on a pilot car.
They're clearing it at night?
Yeah, yeah, clear at night. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Justin, I'll let you guys know that advanced ballots will go out the door today, all of them that we have to this point. So we'll send about two hundred and thirty-five ballots out the door today, and then we'll start early voting on Monday in my office. So come vote early for the primary election, and we do have some evening and a Saturday, and one Saturday will be open. So plenty of time to early vote, and we will have our signs out when we're open so that everyone knows they can stop by. Bring your I D.
Personally, I think Public Works, there's a real issue that's always happened for years, on Rock Creek Road, right before you get to Middle Creek Bridge. That thing has been rebuilt, I don't know how many times. Well, anyhow, it was reported to his department late Friday, and it's coming apart bad. And Monday morning, there was a full crew out there, and it's done. It was done before noon, the Monday. And appreciate them getting out there that quick and that many people and getting it taken care of. But that's about like, I don't think they have anything else.
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank Derek and Janet for this budget. I mean, it's just a piece of paper, but it takes, I really think it takes a whole lot of work to get this paper out. And I don't think anybody needs to be scared of the revenue neutral. And I don't think anybody needs to be scared of the revenue neutral thing, because it's happening all over the state, and it's, it's very difficult to stay revenue neutral with all the uncertainties in, in providing services to, in your county. So I just appreciate how much they did to, you know, get close and work for the future too, and not, not have to play catch, catch-up like a lot of counties are having to play catch-up. And I get emails all the time from other counties about, how does Franklin County take care of their Public Works Department? How do they take care of their ambulance service? How do they take care of the jails? And that's really a compliment to the leadership we have in Franklin County of all the department heads and elected officials that keep this county going. So I want to thank Derek and Janet for what they do for the budget.
Hi.
On Wednesday, last Wednesday, they had a candidate forum. It was very well attended. All three candidates for District Three were there. It was kind of interesting when you hear them talking, and they start talking about schools and housing and jobs, and I'm like, I think you don't have as much authority. I think you do. And, but anyway, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. On Friday, they had a chamber coffee at the Health Department to recognize Blue Cross, Blue Shield Pathways Grants through the years, and truly, those have been across the county. I think every town in Franklin County has been touched by those grants. And then on Monday, Charisse Davis, Representative Charisse Davis, was at Princeton, probably giving us probably the best possible, at least, hope of, of being able to help fund that project that really needs to be done. And this is through the Appropriations Committee, or Appropriations and at the federal level. I think the only hiccup on that one is that we're at the end of a, a voting cycle, so unless it gets caught up in, in that, whether it gets done this year or next, hopefully it, it can move forward. And then Princeton had a meeting, a special meeting on Monday night, talking about whether they were going to exceed the revenue neutral rate and to set their, their budget mill rate. Yesterday morning was the Chamber Board. They had a pretty extensive discussion about setting their core values. And then last night was a special after-hours chamber meeting for QuickCom, recognizing the fiber and the, and they're getting ready. It's going to be turned on, so a lot of people are excited about that. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, I had yesterday, somebody from the community that approached me about a home that was, that caught on fire in Ottawa. It had no, they had no insurance, and I guess it was a divorce situation. The guy thought the insurance was paid in, in fact, it was not paid, and so he does not have money for demolition. But one of the contractors in Franklin County has agreed to demolish it at no cost, but they, we have been asked, but as a county, if we would consider waiving the tipping fees for that particular home. And I brought this up to Derek, and he said this would be the time to ask you all what you thought about that. There really isn't any precedence for that, but it would be just a, it's, it's been sitting empty for over a year. It would get the blight out of the community, and then his hope is to be able to build a smaller home on that property, so it would put something back on the roll, so it would, it's.
I think it's up to the city to file. We already have a program for that.
Well, the, the city aren't just going to add it to their taxes, I don't know. I don't know.
I think in the past, we've waived tipping fees for situations like that where a house burned down. So I'd be.
The, the city does that if they're going to demolish it, but this guy, this, anyway.
What?
So there, there is a program, and so like, if, if it was a blighted house and, and the city, you know, demolishes it, then.
Then it gets assessed to the taxes, but he's trying to do that prior to then, so he doesn't incur that full cost.
Right, right.
And he's got a contractor.
He's got a contractor that will do it.
Asking about the tipping fees.
If, if the tipping fees can be waived, then.
They current on their taxes?
Yes, I believe so. We could find out.
We could find that out.
The only thing I could think of.
So if they're current on their taxes, would you agree to the tipping? To waive the tipping fees?
We've done it in the past.
Think so?
Tragedies like that. Loser house and fires. Yep. I'd be willing to agree to that.
Rod, Dawn, provided there aren't any tax.
I'm, I'm good with it.
Me, all right. Just long-term careful about a decision affecting further down the road.
Yeah.
I was just trying to think if there's any other due diligence that we should be thinking of, but.
Oh, and, and this is not something that we have to do quickly, if you guys want to take a little time. I, I would tell you that situations like this are very fact-specific, so what we may do today does not necessarily, it certainly does not bind us to do anything in the future. I would just always encourage you to look at each individual situation. I, Roy is right, we do things very similar to this when we have fires, and so I don't think it's completely unprecedented, but if you would like to take a week to think about it, and I don't think that's going to harm a thing, so.
Is there intention to go back with another home?
They're hoping if he can get a loan on it, yes.
That would be the only thing, if we're simply cleaning it up to increase the value, so you turn around and sell it, like, it's not really.
Well, but e- even then, he would be able to, somebody's going to build on it. But his intention is to, to, to build a new home.
In spirit, maybe we can let it simmer one week and then bring it back up next week.
Okay. Why don't we do that? In the meantime, we'll check out the tax situation and then.
A little due diligence, say anything, look into it.
I think that has been the, kind of the criteria, if they plan on rebuilding, if they're on the same side, not just sell it or something like that.
Okay, I'll find out specifics, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right.
Don't move.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right, all in favor of a journey? All right, we're done.